All right, I've started the recording for the zoning board. The zoning board meeting of August 20th. I've started the recording. Turning it over to you, Paul.
Okay, it is five o'clock and we will call the meeting to order. So the first item on the agenda is election of a vice chair. This is something we were going to achieve last week and we, or last meeting and we did not. So Mark, I don't know how we go, you know, do people just nominate someone?
Yeah, US Chair just would ask for nominations for vice chair.
Okay, are there any nominations for a vice chair? Since Justin's not here, I'll nominate Bob Mangus.
Okay, and then you ask, are there any other nominations? Just technically ask that three times, but.
Oh, are there any other nominations?
Dave, can you hear me?
We can, so since I've been nominated, can someone explain the role of the vice chair?
That means you are filling in for whenever Paul Rice-Lager is not available to perform his duties as chair. So you are the chair of vice is what that means.
Okay.
Or if I ever, well, even if I have to abstain, Mark, I could still run the meeting, I guess abstain from the vote, right?
Actually, in that case, no, if you were abstaining, that would be because you perceive a conflict of interest and I think it would be better to have the vice chairman, vice chairperson run the meeting. So I think at that point, Justin, or I'm sorry, Bob would also be running the meeting.
Okay.
So you might, so Bob, are you accepting the nomination?
I will, with that being the role, sure. As long as you help guide me through the, I'll need some coaching probably, but I'd be happy to fulfill the role.
Okay.
You should ask if there's any other nominations, Paul. I don't know if you did that.
I did. Are there any other nominations before we hold a vote? Do you want me to ask one more time, Mark?
Sure.
Any other nominations? All right, hearing done, all in favor of nominating Bob Mangus as the vice chair for the zoning board of appeals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Not in favor? All right, motion carries to nominate Bob as the vice chair. The second, excuse me, second order of business would be the approval of the minutes from the July 23rd meeting. Did everyone receive a copy or have an opportunity to review those?
Yes.
Are there any, any comments, concerns, changes, edits?
There was one typo I noticed. I think the word lake was intended and lack is what's in the minutes. And I don't exactly know where to highlight or guide.
I just did a search on the word lack and I found it. It's at the top of the second page, second bullet.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
I like to put a typo in all my minutes, you know, to see if anyone has read them, so.
Good move, Mark.
Are there any other comments about the meeting minutes from the 23rd?
Not from me.
Me neither.
Okay, can we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from last meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, second.
Meeting minutes from July 23rd meeting?
Is there, okay.
Who is the second?
Bob Mangus.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Not in favor? Okay, some motion carries.
You know, are we better off, when we vote, are we better off to like raise a hand or something because no one knows?
When you vote, if, if someone wants to vote in opposition to something, we will hear that. I will just assume, well, if you want, we can do it that way, just to make sure votes are recorded. We can do that, sure. It hasn't really been too much of a problem. If it becomes a problem, we do a roll call vote.
Okay.
But just to make clear for Dave Schultz, Dave, you are serving as a second alternate and your services are needed today. I don't know if you heard that at the beginning.
I'm sorry, I got on a little late. That's fine, I'll stay on then.
Yeah, no, yeah, I just wanted to make it clear to you that you are the fifth member tonight, so.
Very good, thank you.
Congrats on your promotion.
Thank you.
So do we have the acceptance of the meeting minutes noted, Mark?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, could you please read the agenda item for this evening's variance?
Sure. Actually, I'll have Daphne do it because she has got the screen in front of her and I'm monitoring the attendance, so.
Okay.
If she just wants to.
Yeah, okay, I'll just read the public hearing notice. So Nick Madura, on behalf of Aaron Summers and Cory Fink, are requesting variances from the minimum setback for a garage and house addition. The applicant is requesting approval to replace the existing 20 foot by 24 foot detached garage with a 20 foot by 31 foot two-story attached garage, measuring two feet from the right side of the lot line or three feet from the wall in the west lot line. The attached garage will be 21 feet tall with two bedrooms and office and a bathroom above. Section 24, or 10.244 requires a minimum eight foot set, side yard setback for this R1 zone lot.
Thank you, Daphne. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing at 5:07. Are there any reports on a site inspection or anything that the city has done in preparation for the meeting tonight?
I did not do a site inspection. I don't know, I don't think Daphne did either. We had aerial photography that allowed me to see the site well. Daphne, did you have anything to comment? You didn't go look at it either, right?
No, I did not.
No, okay, and that's okay.
It does say, it does say that it's a non-conforming lot. Is it, is it a width thing where they would be granted a lesser setback, side yard setback? On the site plan, I didn't notice any dimensions.
I believe it is a conforming lot. It is greater than 60 feet, or I believe it is about 60 feet wide. So it does conform, so they do have to abide by that eight foot side.
The first sentence of the letter you had, the first letter said, it's on a non-conforming lot.
I suspect the non-conformity they're referring to is that the existing structure is not conforming. But you can ask the applicant when, when that's, when the time comes for that.
Okay, of course, we wouldn't have to if we had a site plan.
We can, we consider it conformant, so.
Daphne or Mark, did you have any other additional information? Or comments?
We have received a statement which we, as part of the hearing, we will note that in the record. I believe the statement is, was from Eugene Posh, but he's also present, so I presume that, well, we'll see what, how the hearing goes. I will make a comment at the end of the hearing, if necessary.
Oh, correct.
We have no, we have no other information regarding this matter. We do have, I did get a drawing that was forwarded to zoning board members showing some dimensions regarding this from one of the zoning board members. So that's, that was submitted as well, but nothing else from staff.
Okay. Then moving on, then we will have the applicant who is present tonight to present the variance request. So if you could state your name, please?
This is Nick Maduro, on behalf of Sketchworks Architects.
Okay, then if you would like to go through your variance request, you know, describe, you know, items in your, your letter describing the hardship and your process going through, asking for the variance.
Okay, um, so looking at the site plan that's on the screen there, that's showing the new proposed two-story garage space exactly in the footprint of where the existing was. And to that point earlier, yes, we were referring to the non-conforming garage as part of it because the garage does not sit within the current eight-foot setback. It's three feet and we would be maintaining that three feet. We've looked at alternative options to utilize the eight feet and they weren't feasible for various reasons, pulling cars into the garage. We tried turning the garage 90 degrees and that wasn't feasible for, for the site, for views out to the backyard. So this, we felt was, had the least impact and it, and it kept with the existing idea of where the garage is and where the garage is in this area and on this street, so.
Okay. Do you have any other information on the hardships that you are listing in your application?
This is Aaron Summers. I am one of the property owners along with Cory Fink. I'm here on the call with Nick Maduro. Essentially, we tried multiple different layouts. For an architectural firm, we have, you know, consultant contractors that have come over back in flooding of 2018. We were, had evaluations done to try to make options for more rooms downstairs with digging out the egress windows and due to the floodplain and water drainage issues that are current on the site, that is not feasible. Had two different contractors come through the house to evaluate adding on to the front of the house and that was not feasible, both due to the front yard setback and just the physical structure that would be needed to add on in the front. And then, as Nick explained, we explored various options in the back which were greatly restricted by the 70-foot maple, which we would love to keep. We know that Middleton is very big on maintaining our existing landscape and sustainability and obviously removing a tree that large would only increase the problematic water drainage issues to the lot and to both of the neighboring lots as well. And then with the backyard setback, as many other properties right on our block and adjacent have dealt with, it's, you know, these are homes that were built in the 50s and they were all in existence before any of these zoning requirements were updated. So there are many, many people on the same block that are not only in support of this, but, you know, understand the same challenges because they're just kind of centered in the lot like that. So there's very few things you can do reasonably to accommodate any type of addition or increase your property value at all. And building this addition would give us, especially with the immediate adjoining neighbor who has submitted, David is on the call as well and submitted a letter of support along with our letter of hardship. He's aware of the drainage issues right at the entrance to the garage there and the contractor has assured us that it would give us the opportunity to solve those issues as well, so. Those are the different things we're looking at. Were there any questions?
Where's the water gonna go?
Where is the water going to go?
Yeah, from the garage. How are you changing the water flow from the back of the garage when we extend it, Aaron?
Um, well, this is not my profession to speak to, but basically the, the incline of the current ground and paving and deviation towards the lot line there in question, we would be able to level that so that it properly and create the channel to drain so that it goes, flows more to the street and to,
Okay.
or even lines along the property instead of gathering all in one spot, which kind of just flows down to each home down North Avenue in the middle of the lots then.
Oh, yeah, goes to my property and then floods from there out.
Right.
So we'll, we'll throw this out there, so you know, I'm kind of jumped in anyways.
One second, sir. Paul, are you recognizing additional speakers right now?
Um, not quite yet. I'm just gonna give the, I would like to, I mean, you'll have an opportunity to provide your comments. I want to provide an opportunity for the board to ask the applicant specific questions. Does anybody else have any other, any other questions for the applicant?
So I have a question and Daphne, maybe that's on there. Was this an addition, not just the garage, but a living space above it?
Yes, so there is, it is a two-story garage. So you can see here, this is the first story and then this will be the second story. There's two bedrooms, a bathroom and a small office space.
And then zoning look at it to see a lot coverage if it's, if it's falling under the.
Yeah, so it's right at 35%.
Right at 35?
Yeah, with this addition.
And they aren't adding anything of that deck on the other side or anything that would be?
No, so there's an existing deck. I don't believe they're having any changes to that.
Okay. Have you had a CSM prepared? Because right now we can see dashlines for the property lines.
No, not at this point.
And Mark, that is something that will have to be provided in all the dimensions verified?
Um, you can make that a requirement, a contingency of the requirement. We don't necessarily require it. The onus is always on the property owner or the applicant to make sure that they're complying with zoning regulations. Only to make sure they're complying is to require a CSM, but we don't require that out of the gate.
Are there other questions from the board members?
Yeah, so because it is attached and it has a second floor, we don't have the garage height rule. Is that right, Mark? Opitz?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? If not, then I would like to recognize or provide any opportunity for anybody, any of the neighbors that have attended this call to, you know, have an opportunity to voice their opinion or for those variants. So I think someone was talking.
Yeah, I was talking, it's Eugene Posh.
Yeah, thanks. And could you state where, yeah, your address?
6807, I'm to the left of the residence facing.
Okay.
So this, well, there's a letter in there that I sent to Dave, because I don't know, I mean, Mark, because I didn't know if I was gonna be able to make it or not. It's a large building. I just got a letter from you. I talked to Daphne about three weeks ago. She said I'd get a letter in the mail, like a call about it. I didn't have very much information on it, so it's like a sticker shock in the last week to me because it's a big building going in the back of the yard, which will obstruct my view, the wind, some sunlight. So I had some concerns. Apparently Cory and I were unable to hook up between his work and my work. I'm a landscaper. We did hook up yesterday a little bit. We did hook up again tonight before the meeting a little bit. And we're trying to come up with a communication solution for both of us that would work both of us better. Because the other option, I guess, is the fact that if I object to this too much and you guys don't approve it, they're just gonna move it inside of the property line, so it's closer to my property line and I'll see a bigger building anyways. So I was wondering if somehow that we could try to get the board to reconvene in like two weeks, so Cory and I can have some more time. He's back from work. So we can, because he was working out of town, that we could actually discuss a few options before permanent decisions made. So they're either changing it or I have to agree to this because I think the change might be worse for me. And in both hands, the way it is now is beneficial for them more than where they would put it, which would be in the center of the house, which are no drawn plans for it yet. I mean, I just want a little bit more information before I either object or approve of one or the other. I think they're afraid that if we don't make an answer now, they'll have to wait 60 days for you guys to come back to get an answer.
Can we clarify it? You live on the left side of them?
Correct.
Looks, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's your house dotted line is your existing house?
Correct. And my patio, my garden is under their maple tree and my patio is right next to it. So my garage is further to the left. So my view is south and to the west. So when this building goes up, I'm seeing basically an apartment building. I see a big flat side of a building that's gonna look into the side of my house and be higher than my house so they can see back into my windows. Now Cory and I weren't around and we talked, I got back today about 4:30 so I could come to this. But we're both willing to talk to each other if we can get you guys to come back in like two weeks, so we got a little time to talk to each other. If that's a possibility, so a decision doesn't have to be made today that one of us don't feel good about it all.
Mark, that's kind of interesting. I have not, I don't really remember an applicant asking to, or, well, at first I should ask, Aaron and Cory, is that something that you've agreed to or you're amicable?
No, to be clear, that is not what we are asking the board to do. Eugene is welcome to voices of opinion, as everyone in the neighborhood is. I, yeah, talking, my husband, his name is Cory. It's, they're trying to find a amicable solution for his property line, us in planting trees, different things that would, you know, give, improve the viewpoint. We're not asking for, you know, an extension here because we are, we've clearly gone through the last two months to even get to this point in the process. They are welcome to discuss solutions for the current privacy fence and planting trees and other things that would help on that property line. But the fact is, is that there's a 70-foot maple tree already blocking this entire view, so.
It doesn't block any part of the.
Really, it's not going to impact his view from how far he is anymore. And he deals with the same issue since his garage is already not abiding by backyard setback. So his property is laid out the same way if you scoot over more on the aerial there. So, no, we are not asking for continuation because we know your time is valuable. I sit on City of Middleton Parks and Rec. I know just how hard it is to get the entire board together every month, much less twice a month. And you guys are typically only meeting once a month, so we definitely don't want to delay a decision another 30 days at this point. We would like to hear from the other neighbors that are in full support of this as well.
So Daphne, show, show us the, show us that west elevation. Is that the view that the neighbor is going to be seeing? Yes.
Yep.
That's the view, okay. And the existing house is actually the one with the gable facing us? And the garage is the.
That's all the garage. Yeah, so that's what I'll see now.
Well, there's a 70-foot maple tree blocking that, that's not.
Yeah, if you go to the, if you go to the satellite view, I see tons of trees in between.
There's, there's one huge maple tree which is 20 feet.
That's one tree right there.
Yep.
It's large, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask the neighbor what his view is to that side?
The maple tree.
What would this be blocking, in other words?
I wish I could have got pictures to you guys because I can see over the garage and I see their garage top right now. And I have sunlight and light and I can see Dave's trees, which is the neighbor that signed the letter. Once this building goes up, and actually I was over there yesterday and talked to Cory, this is the first time we were able to talk. And I kind of put polls so I could see how high it would be. So I will lose to the lot to the right, which is Dave's property. I will lose seeing another 40% of his trees and that's the way my patio faces. So this is my relaxation area. I'm not asking for them. Cory actually stopped me at 4:10 in the front yard and talked to me and threw another opt shot to me about adding arbor vitas. The first time Cory and I talked was last night at 7:30. Kind of about any of this at all. So it's really short-term for me. And Mark can abide by that because I've called him and been bugging him for a while. Concerned, you know, what's going on because I really didn't know what was going on. So I'm just trying to buy a little time so Cory and I can talk a little bit and maybe come up with a solution that's better on my half instead of making me even having issues for them.
Okay, well, that's between you and the applicants, I guess. And apparently, the applicant is not agreeable to this.
We're agreeable to discussing options. We just don't want to postpone this because we know how hard it is to get on your meeting schedule in the first place. You know, if we delay it, we're delaying it by a minimum of 30 days to start this process all over again.
Aaron, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What, what options, you know, Cory literally kind of gave it to me, obviously, you know, when we came home today. What are the options that we are offering, I guess, at this time? So I know, I mean, I know you want my blessing, but I, it's just so at the last minute, I'm just trying to get, get it wrapped around my head of what the options are that we're willing to do.
Well, to be clear, we're not infringing on your lot line. If we were trying to approach on the eight-foot setback, that's your lot line, then we would be asking your permission, but we're talking to Dave, whose lot line it is and whose permission we already established 60 days ago. If you and Cory would like to discuss options as far as trees, since I know nature is important to you, it is very important to us, hence why we do not want to have to demo our entire backyard, cut down a 70-foot tree and put a garage and an eight-foot setback from your property because that is really the only other option here and it completely destroys our entire backyard as well as taking down a tree that's gigantic and been there for forever. So if there is, you are mendable to, you know, different decoration on the lot line or trees.
Well, that's what I'm trying to.
Cory is welcome to, I know, I'm not the tree person. I'm not the one that does the landscaping around our house. So my husband is happy to, you know, make it viewable as, you know, for you as possible. But it's not something that we can fairly ask the zoning board to weigh in on and decide on because it's not the issue on the table that they're presented with tonight.
Hi, sorry, I, I'm gonna just, my name's Cory Fink. I'm, Aaron's husband and been talking with Eugene. I think Eugene's wanting me to put this on record that, yes, I am willing to plant those arbor vitas along that line and have that on city record that, you know, that will be something that will help improve the aesthetic view from his backyard as well as trim any overlying branches that would, you know, shadow his garden at this point to, to improve the lighting as well. So as a, you know, a neighborly thing to do, I will put that on record that that would happen to improve his view.
Cory, can I ask you a question quick?
Yes.
Do you see the, your construction layout where it says your existing deck and stuff?
Yes.
Where, and then we were trying to talk about this, but obviously we got together too late today even. Where would it start? Would it start where the existing deck is? Would it come back past the corner of the house? You know what I mean? So I, if I'm agreeing to something, I just want to know what I'm agreeing to.
So with the construction of this, a lot of our deck will have to get ripped up and because of that, we will actually reduce the size of our decking back there and increase our green space. But along the side of the fence line, I will build an elevated garden that will give the arbor vitas a little bit higher elevation so that you have four or five feet of, you know, green field above the tree line, or above the fence line, I should say.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is how far back, you know, I see the existing deck where it says existing deck, then there's a little square and then there's a rectangle.
Yeah, from the corner of that house, our housing line to the tree line.
Okay.
To the trunk of the tree.
Okay. I mean, this is the best option for you guys and I understand that, Aaron, is where it's beneficial for you guys to keep your yard too. Like I said, it's just the last minute that I found out about it and it's just a, a total panic for me to try to figure out in my head what was going on, so. As long as Cory's willing to be reasonable, obviously, it's gonna be between Cory and I. And we'll work together with that.
Yep, that's perfectly fine. We can bring some printouts of the aerial view from the architect that I clearly work for and you guys can draw up whatever you would, would like to create back there. I'm not the tree person in the household.
I'm a landscaper, unfortunately, so.
Are there other neighbors present that wish to provide input?
I see David, our next door neighbor, whose lot line this is, is on the call. I'm not sure if he's on mute or not.
I think you can hear me. I sent a letter, agreed to it and pretty much did. I'm acceptable to it. So other than that, I really don't have anything else to add.
Thank you, David.
I do have a question for Erin and Cory, uh, regarding stormwater, there was some mention about, uh. Runoff. Can you explain a little bit more to me about that?
So on this block there, and again, this is not my profession, so Nick, feel free to weigh in. As an architect that deals with this more, um, in this block has, you know, obviously Middleton saw. Historical flooding in two thousand eighteen, um, all over the city, this block has even what, you know, regular rains seen issues for all of the lots. I think it's partly due to the age of the homes and the positioning of them, that, you know, over the time. Ground has just worn channels kind of through the middle of those lots. And that creates only one pathway for the water, it doesn't evenly distribute.
Okay.
This gives us the chance to actually raise certain portions. Of both the driveway of the ground in between and around there. And, um, just more successfully deal with that for both, for neighbors on both sides, we've talked to. They would appreciate not having those collecting pools in their, in the middle of their yard and backyard.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board members?
Well, I'll just comment on drainage. You know, when you're building new, new houses on new lots, you are to drain to the lot lines. And then either go front or back. These older. Properties, of course, were not quite as technically evolved. And quite honestly. There's probably not a lot you can do. I mean, when you talk about, you know, when Erin talks about maybe raising the driveway, that probably can't be done. You know, because then you'd have to raise the garage floor and then you raise everything, but.
Right.
You know, I think. As long as you're not creating more. Flow. You know, off of your lot, um, you know, I, I'm, I think you've, you've done everything you can, you know?
Correct, and yeah, they would be angling the side lot a little bit more to make it drain on that property line, as you mentioned, and. There's actually a slope in the plan from the contractor in the garage, correct? Properly. Uh, direct. Water.
Where does it drain now, to the front or the back?
To the front.
Drains at the front, okay.
Correct.
Paul, this is Dave Schultz. Can you hear me? Yeah, what, would there be a suggestion that perhaps in their landscaping, when they grade this property, that they create kind of a stormwater detention area? So we would ensure that the property to the, uh. Each side does not get flooded, that it was, is retained and runoff at a no greater rate than pre-development?
Sorry, I was muted, that's a good comment, Dave, I think, uh, you know, we're, uh, asked to rule on the variance that's in front of us and. I, Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know how far our reach goes to suggest certain design features. Of the project?
You can condition a variance, um, on circumstances that mitigate the effect of granting variance, I, I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
In this case, you know, they're expanding. The footprint a bit to the back. Uh, and to the, um, left side. But I heard Cory say, of course, or maybe it was Nick saying that they're removing some of the deck, I guess it was Cory said that. That's there, um, they can't go over thirty-five percent lot coverage, including their new addition and. Deck or patio, whatever they have, can't cover more than thirty-five percent of the lot. We measure the, the, uh, lot coverage to the foundation, not to the eaves. Although we do measure setback to the eaves, which is why the notice was written the way it was. And speaking more about drainage, uh, it's important that you can't alter drainage patterns along the lot line from what they are now, as Mark Wolford stated very well. So if you're concerned about that, then having a condition. To try and address that, if, you know, I think is appropriate.
Okay.
And I would also.
If I could. Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna add that, you know, changing the drainage pattern at the lot line, when I hear things about raising. The ground, that. Causes me to think drainage patterns are changing. So that's, and then that berm that would be going in, you'd want to make sure that that's not blocking the flow of water, so I just would caution, and I'm not a landscaper either, but. Those things can easily affect drainage patterns, so you'd want to be careful with that.
Correct, and then this is Erin, the owner, um, and what I meant by raising the driveway is that you can't see it from the aerial, but currently that kind of, uh, jagged part at the very end of the. Driveway before the garage. Has a huge dip in it towards the center. So by raising it, I just simply mean having a level driveway, so water doesn't pool and collect. You know, in the center of the lot and continue on down the block. It would just be proper, more properly draining towards the front as it should be.
I, I think we could stipulate that, uh. Any, any addition to the existing. Structure would not create. Any more. Of a drainage problem. I mean, if they do it the way it is, and it's the drainage is the same as it is right now, everything's fine, if it creates a bigger problem. Then that would be a problem, so our stipulation could be that any addition above and beyond what's existing. Cannot create a, uh, an increase in the drainage problem. That's something we can talk about as a board when we close the.
It would be amendable to that because that's, that's our goal too, so.
This is Dave Rais, I have a question, if you don't mind, um, currently the downspouts on the east side of the property go to the driveway and as Erin said, kind of go back towards the garage and go forward. In this redesign, are you going to put up new gutters that might direct the water? For the back or, um?
Correct.
That's the thought of the gutters currently, because right now that is part of the problem, uh, gutter comes. Right into the driveway and then kind of sits there and. That's an issue. Is, if the architect can maybe touch on that?
Yes, that's, that's correct, Dave, the contractor and I'm happy to bring over a detailed plan for you that we would be actually submitting for a building permit. Contractor as all, you know, new gutters in there and downspouts with a much better directional pattern than the current ones are. And part of that is, you know, simply the fact that as you. Were around for the initial addition by the previous homeowner.
Right, right.
Even initial gutters on the garage, so.
Right.
You know, the new design enables us to really well plan that out and, yeah, definitely help you out and make sure that's directed away in the right direction like it should be.
Great, thank you.
Are there other questions or comments from the board members or? Anyone in participation?
The water off the garage, is that going to come forward towards the street, Erin, or is it going to go back around the garage and come towards my property?
Forward towards the street.
Okay, that's, thank you.
Other questions?
Well, I just want to comment on that, that's impossible. The, the garage on the side that faces. Eugene.
That's gonna keep coming my way.
Cannot, cannot go to the driveway. And it's an addition, so that off the, uh, what's above the new. Looks like a mudroom and then whatever's above the mudroom and the left side of the garage. You know, that's all additional water created. So you do have the, that's why I say the stipulation will be that you can't create any more of a drainage problem. With any addition.
Correct, if you look at the, are the elevations in there with the roof? Speaking to. Make care of the architect, the way they angled the roof. Because of the tricky addition was part of that to make sure that there was no buildup for water or ice. Or on the stray flow. And the architect can probably speak better to that than I can.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, she's pointing to some of those areas on the back, you know, obviously the side that's facing there will, will drain off of that side because that's where the roof is sloping down to, but. The side along the, uh, be the west, um, property line would drain towards the garage in the front. The driveway.
And while we can, you know, obviously, there will be some in the back, but that it's not increasing anything in the back, it's directing more towards the front with the new design.
Actually, it is, Daphne, if you look at the west. And we look at the addition. Above the little single window. Way on the end there, yeah, all that water coming off of that garage is now has, is trapped behind the house. So that's additional as, as well as the, the slope part to the rear of the lot. Of the, uh, of the, uh, area that connects the house, yes, right there. The water coming off of, do you guys understand what I'm saying here? That's creating additional water that's channeled right to the back corner there. So, like I said, it has to be addressed. And maybe that includes some underground piping or something to get it.
Get it around. I'm sorry, this is Cory, I'm just gonna chime in just a little bit, uh, currently all water flowing. Actually flows through everybody's backyard, Dave's, my own. Eugene's, all the way to a central piping line through a, pretty much a walkway on the other side of Eugene's, uh, driveway over there, which we're actually getting pitched and sloped, but everybody's yard actually flows. Back that way, so anything that we can actually pitch forward would actually be a little bit of a benefit, but currently everything slopes to the backyard. And drains back along the property line in the back. To a drainage canal between, actually just adjacent to Eugene's home. We actually are looking at water barrel options as well for water saving for garden and other things like that as well, to kind of minimize any excess water or actually water saving. Options for us as well.
Okay. Yeah, if that's the existing, uh, pattern of the flow, you know, then you're just, uh. What you're doing, you know, the only problem is you're, you're taking and making it, uh. Non-permeable, you know, if it was lawn, some of it would be soaked in. But, you know, that's something that. That it looks like we'll have to work on.
Are there other questions? From the board? If not, um. I would close the, uh, this portion of the hearing at.
Just, just one second, uh, Paul, before you do that, so I normally would tell you if I've gotten any other communication.
Oh, right, sorry.
And I did mention, so in addition to the ones that have already been mentioned from Mr. Reese and Mr. Posh. We did also have. An email exchange, uh, which I don't know whether to make part of the record or not, but, um. I'll just mention it, uh, involving stormwater concerns between, um. With, with Gary Huth, our assistant stormwater engineer. And, um. And I had that here in front of me just a second. There it is. Let me just see if that, well, you know what, it's, it's, it was, it was directed to Mr. Posh, who then provided assessment, so it's fine, it's not, I guess it doesn't have to be part of the record, it wasn't directed to me as the zoning board, so. But it's, it's, it's fine, I should have, uh, made that conclusion beforehand, so. It was just a question from Mr. Posh and he got his answers from, from our stormwater person, so.
Okay.
Uh, so I had no other participation or no other, uh, communications from, from others.
Okay. So at this point, uh, I will close the, uh. This portion of the hearing at five forty-four so that we can discuss as. A board. Mark is.
Can we go to the site plan again, please? There we go. Well, you know, as much as I appreciate a neighbor who is not, uh. Not in favor of an addition. You know, when I look at this, if, if these people instead wanted to add onto their house to the back. And they stayed eight feet away from each side yard, they could go back. You know, with the house. And that would block the view too, that'd block it even more, right, right there where Daphne showed. You're right. I guess my biggest concern would be the drainage. And if, like I said, if we put a stipulation in this and say that, uh. No additional drainage problems would be created. As monitored by the zoning department or by. Yeah, who's gonna make that assessment? Yeah, it'd have to be, well, Gary Huth would be the guy, right, Mark Opitz?
Yeah.
He would determine if there was, um, a, a problem created by this as far as drainage goes.
Yeah, so, I mean, yes, and so that would be. You know, you could, again, you could make that a condition of approval to obtain the. Or to. Ensure that it doesn't, that there's not a problem created by working with the city engineer, this is assistant city engineer, the stormwater engineer.
And he'll be able to make that determination just by looking at the plans? I got a feeling he'll have to go on site. If there's a problem, someone raises a question? Yep.
I think the better way. I'm sorry, the better way to handle it would, would be basically to state what the performance standard is, that you don't expect there to be any, you know. Worse thing. Ultimately, that is, is really a private matter dispute, but I mean, I think if you want to protect the zoning board's, uh, decision. You, you know, you state what the parameters are, the approval and how it gets accomplished, uh, you know, maybe leave that out of it, unless you have specific language you want me to include.
See, Mark, isn't there just a simple statement that we can make that? The, uh. Stormwater cannot runoff at a greater rate than before this addition was proposed or up to whatever, or whatever the stormwater calculations are for thirty-five percent of the property?
That, that's what I was suggesting, Dave, that's exactly what I was, was saying.
Sure.
So, so the extra area that's going to be impervious. I think Mark was pointing, or somebody was pointing that out, you know, that, that the addition in the back is going to add to the impervious surface area. So, um, but that might be mitigated elsewhere, but, but, but you just said, Dave, having that language as part of the motion, I think is, is wise.
Yeah, also the additional seven feet to the back of the garage might be. Kind of stopping some of the water from flowing across the lot, you know, seven more feet of dam. So that's why we just want to make sure that we're not creating any more problems as far as drainage. We can address that as a stipulation.
Yeah, just a thought, in addition, it was spoke about earlier, but do we want to make part of the. The decision that they do an actual survey to make sure this property isn't on the lot line instead of two feet or three feet off?
Mark Opitz, is that normally required by zoning? That people prove where their lot line is?
No.
No, the, the onus is again on the, on the builder to make sure that, on the property owner, to make sure they're building it where they said they. Are building it. They cannot build any closer than what the variance is. That if the variance is granted, they can't build any closer. With any part of their structure than what they got approval for, if there ends up being a dispute, and the, the way they avoid a dispute is to have a survey done ahead of time. But, um. We, you know, I mean, I guess you could require, I've seen it required before, I think, it's, it's been a long time, but, um. You know, I. I, I, I think it's, you know, whether you're required or not, I, I. I mean, I don't see any harm in requiring it, but I'm not advocating that you do it, and I don't know that it's necessary to do it, you can often find stakes, you know. It, it's an older property, so the stakes are underground theoretically, they're there and are accurate, but ultimately, it's, it's the risk of the property owner.
Right, and, you know, we've, we've done this many times before and we don't. We don't always require.
Right.
It's verified by CSM, but, uh. I guess that would, you know, it's, if, if they just take the word of the builder, you know, I, I don't know, you know?
The, the problem with that is, where's the builder twenty years from now when they try to sell this property?
Yeah, true.
Well, that's a problem for the homeowner then.
Yeah. And perhaps all we do is make a recommendation that they verify their lot line before they start construction.
Remember also that this is being built on the, basically on the same footprint as the original garage.
Right.
But it isn't like they're moving it any closer.
Right, exactly right.
Yeah, so maybe it's not that. Yeah, so maybe it's not that big of a deal.
It may not, as long as the existing garage isn't over the lot line now.
Yeah.
We didn't have that issue.
You know, or on the lot line, in that case. Zero setback or a one foot setback or something, but.
Yeah, and maybe it's not a problem, just trying to avoid a future problem for the homeowner. I think our bigger issue is the stormwater issue, so.
Mark, was there any follow-up to the information we received this afternoon regarding any deed restrictions with against some property?
Sure, I can comment on that. There was a question we got, which I shared the information with all the board members, just so the public knows. There is a provision in our ordinance also that instead of getting a variance, you can have a deed restriction on the adjoining property to maintain 15 feet of building separation. That's in lieu of getting a variance, like I said. In this case, if you can go to the site plan, please, Daphne. Or, or the, yeah. Oops, I just realized I don't have, I'm thinking, why isn't it moving? And then I realized I have a different window. So the problem with this is that there's a, you know, the 15 feet is, is not quite met on the bottom right corner of the garage. So that, any portion of that garage would have to be at least 15 feet from the neighbor's garage, and then that part is deed restricted, so that to maintain 15 feet of building separation. So that is an option in lieu of a variance, but in this case, they are within that 15 feet for a portion of the existing structure, so presumably they would be with the new structure. They are trying to, as you can see in the back, the structure goes all the way to the 30 foot minimum rear setback line, so presumably, you know, they can't move the garage back further.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
So looking at the hardships for this, I mean, is there any other, any other discussion between board members?
Not here.
Not here.
No, I haven't.
Is there a motion? Well, we should look at, you know, take a look at the hardship. So it's somewhat of a tight lot, trying to do building addition. Any other options were prohibitive on the site, you know, either negatively impacting the vegetation or front yard setbacks?
Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
If you read it in this letter, and I don't know if Corey and Aaron are, the only reason I asked originally when we started is if we could wait two weeks. It says in the last, second to last sentence there, it says, we have discussed the intent with the neighbors. The only person I talked to was Mark and Daphne till yesterday to find out about this. So it's really kind of just a shock that I got to absorb and figure out the options. And that's why I physically asked for myself, so I can wrap my head around it a little bit.
Okay.
But I mean, this is realistically and legitimately, with what you guys can vote on, it's most likely the best option for me. Otherwise, they're just gonna push it over eight feet from my property line for more than one intent. And unfortunately for them, if they did that, they won't have any backyard really to see the kids out the house, which really sucks. Excuse my language, but.
Well, thanks for, uh, thanks for the input, Eugene. I think we, because we did close the, the public portion, so now we're discussing this board. Thanks. You know, Mark, you know, to follow up on the, the request from earlier in the, in the public portion, is there any precedent for pushing decisions off for two weeks?
Well, we, you aren't guided by precedent. You, you are guided by the circumstances before you. You're asking.
Wouldn't that be up to Corey to decide if he wants to withdraw his application at this point?
Well, exactly.
But, well, to answer the question, I mean, you have the right to postpone a decision. It's been done before, but that's not, you know, that doesn't have to compel that decision here. I mean, each case rests on its own merits, so.
Right.
Each circumstances are unique. So whether you decide to postpone a community or information is entirely up to you. It's been done before, but it doesn't have any precedential.
Right, but I don't know if we need any more information because, you know, what we're hearing, you know, from both the comments and, and the public portion was that an opportunity to work together with the landscaping not necessarily change the applicant's request, right?
Exactly, I agree.
You know, and that's certainly something that we can write in, should we, you know, you know, take a vote, that that's one of the parameters or the conditions of the approval to continue that relationship to come to an agreeable solution.
And what happens if they can't?
You're hearing me? I think we, I think we have to look at the variance requests that we were given. And, and decide on that.
I'm saying I'll give my support for it, is what I was saying, Paul. I will give my support for it. Because it's gonna hinder me worse if they change it. I'm not trying to butt in here, but I'm just saying I will give my support for it as the other neighbor.
Eugene, you really aren't supposed to be.
I'm sorry.
I will make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the variance with a stipulation that, that no additional stormwater problems are created by the, by the proposed addition.
I second that motion.
Well, and I would add to it in, you know, knowing full well that, you know, they may or may not come to an agreeable solution, that the two parties work together to come to an agreement on the landscaping on that edge.
I'm not in agreement with that.
That's our, that's not, okay, part of our variance.
I'm not in agreement with doing that because if they can't come to an agreement, I don't think that should have any bearing on the variance granting.
No, it's not a zoning problem.
Right.
Or issue.
No, that's true.
Exactly right.
Yeah.
It sounds like the parties on both sides are in support of what's been submitted to us. And I think the hardship is presented well in the letter where they're talking about how they went through different potential solutions and arrived at the one that's in front of us. And so I think that it's pretty clear that what's in front of us. I'm, I'm in favor of what we were talking about, approving this as, as it's submitted.
With the stipulation.
With the stipulation.
Okay. With the stipulation and then accepting those hardships listed in the one, two, three, fourth paragraph. Okay, so Mark made a motion. Is there, is there a second?
I second it.
All in favor?
Just one second, the note taker, before you want to vote on it. I've learned it's good to just make sure I got it for the notes, so.
Okay.
So you're saying to grant the variance, but motion by Wolford, saying by Veronica, to grant the variance as submitted in the meeting materials, based on the project submitted in the meeting materials. Based on that, this is the most reasonable building solution that maximizes use of the existing footprint while minimizing impacts on vegetation. And I don't know what's in the fourth paragraph that you're citing.
It was the hardships.
And then with the stipulation that this does not alter the stormwater drainage off the lot line.
Correct.
Correct.
Stormwater flow.
Created by the proposed addition.
And Mark, it, it certainly will alter it, but we don't want to have any more impact from it.
But at the lot lines, the idea is that, that's why I said the word lot lines, so it's gonna alter it on the site. But you, the idea is that you're not trying to change the drainage patterns once they leave the lot.
Very good, very good. I'd call a question.
I think we're ready for a vote. It was moved in second.
Yep.
Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, so that carries five zero. Did you get that, Mark?
Yep.
Okay. Well, there's nothing else on the agenda, so is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second? Beat me to it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alrighty.
Alright, alright, goodnight, guys.
Thanks.
See you guys.